All right, I don't know if you can hold code this stuff. A column meeting to order. This is the primary focus of the meetings of our hearing on the public hearing on twenty twenty six budget. There's also actually four resolutions. Three highway department and that's one about operation. We're open today. Six twelve. So I'm going to open the public hearing on the budget first. Does any comments from anybody? But we have to keep it open for fifteen minutes. Then we close it, but I guess the see upshot of it is is that will be under the tax cap. Most budget round. And now.
Now that's that changes a little. To see.
Yeah.
What was that issue?
So. Man, what was the student number on the tag of set the CPI and where they get your tax cap?
You have eleven minutes tax base threat factor at one point here, zero five seven. They allow me that semi throwback.
So then the amount that we
Two thousand two percent twenty twenty five.
That we allow a whole letting factor.
Let's say it's a two percent. So we're right at fifty two percent tax.
Yeah, so the total amount that we were allowed to, I guess it was ten.
How long that we're allowed under the.
Yeah, it was.
Ten million five.
Four twenty four. And then the amount that's in right now is ten nine three seventy five. That's the amount in preliminary.
Oh.
So since we're just waiting, if someone shows up to comment. Let's go through these resolutions. So first one is to purchase the twenty twenty five Chevy Silverado. The thirty five hundred Chevy Silverado with a four box on the back. We're going to be trading in the old baby truck. Which is a two thousand nineteen Silverado.
What will this be used for?
It's going to be used as the new watering part of the truck.
Does that mean it only goes out to service water this week? So what does that mean?
Oh, pretty much to me, it was it's usable for all the trailer to the main breaks and the water department, you know. It's a big enough truck. It's a three quarter ton truck with a utility box on the back. So we could carry more tools than that or should go haul the trailer out every night. Really mean these carry generators, the bigger tools that we need currently. Well, we have water being friends.
So when trade in, you don't spend fifteen thousand. Up to fifty thousand plus the trade in value.
Yes.
The trade in value would be.
Twenty nine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, literally, I've always been up to fifty four. So they have seventy nine tolls with the bounces, but I'm only going to spend fifty to get through the trade.
After. Okay, so you give up the twenty nine thousand dollar trucks and then you might have to spend up to fifty. Right. So it could be that it's seventy nine thousand.
Yeah.
They're expensive.
I'll be thirty basketball out of twelve. They have twenty three companies.
So is this a in twenty five? Does that mean it's brand new or?
Brand new.
I know that.
So.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes. Last one is I'd like to sell truck number eight, two thousand fourteen Russell tar dump truck with a following Sander. In the town of Caroline for fifty thousand dollars. And we turn the phone to DA fifty one thirty point two.
Did you replace that already here? Or does it need to be replaced? Is your stuff, you're selling it? Is there a replacement for it already?
I have a replacement, but.
The sale prices.
So.
I'll move it.
I'll say. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next one's the Western Star. Yes, next one is a twenty twenty five Russell tire course out of that single axle gas chassis. Using money from DA fifty one thirty point two. Got to receive around ten thousand for the outback county contract three zero one zero nine one four. And then this truck will arrive in like twenty twenty nine. No, this is already, it's all put together. Oh. So it's it's a turnkey truck that the one of the reasons I need it is due to the fact that I've got some more roads to plow and prebuild out. They've got some issues going on there. I can't take the chances of not doing that road. Roads that they were doing for me. Right. I have to make sure they get done. Because it's back on me. It's something that happens tonight. Yeah. Yeah, there, you know, I know you told me about the if a new DPW, a green DPW. Yeah. Over that.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And then the next one would be the Operation Greenlight Resolution.
I I think that on tonight's agenda, because I was hoping to proclaim veterans week in the town of driving November ninth, three to fifteen. And then also we're doing Operation Greenlight again, where we have a free light board. So we're passing out. So that's what that's about. I'm with a free green. You know, some over there, somebody wants.
Well, when you leave here, you're going to get our shop door to see a green light.
Was it the one on the side?
That.
Is it the green light on the side?
No, it's my entrance way.
The one this well from the street? Was when I drove in at this bike.
It'd be it'd be my evidence to my officer who there's a collar on, but you can see the green one.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank Rick for putting up the veterans, military veterans parking signs. This is a terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, now can I hang out for a few minutes?
Um, apologies. You guys are just waiting the fifteen minutes for the public. Can I ask a question about the budget?
Yep.
Well, um, has there been any like was there anything difficult about putting it together for the next year? And has any deployments increased or decreased financially, like whether the expenses of news projected?
And I don't necessarily think it was difficult this year. When the when the increases are, you know, going to be obviously like the it's kind of weird like so the like healthcare premiums like wow for everybody, but we're changing plans. So we yes, kept it from going up as high as it could have. So that's one one change we did. And then another but but you know we're also going to have some salary changes. And then there's in certain materials always go up, you know, the like, you know, the highway side. I mean, Rick does a good job of keeping things in budget, but even he's, you know, if you come to the meetings, you'll hear about how truck car stays on that. Yeah. So solve me of John causes. You know, the, I think when we get the it's the new, I mean, some of the things like the capital projects that are in different lines because they're being you know, that we have grants and things, so we we fund them a little bit differently because we we do a bond anticipation note on certain things. So they're they're in our accounting, but they're not necessarily in the budget yet because we're not making payments on debt. So but those that, you know, depending on the bits we get, the original prices, you might have gone up some. Because, you know, some of these things like the rail bridge, for instance, say, you know, we put it out for bid last year, came back. Well, this year we put it out once ago, and then it came back. We had to revisit it. So there's, I thought I learned that. Really think there was a lot we found difficult in this budget. Something they own. What else? We we make a new thing we put in is for a grant writer to help us some recreation grants that we want to go for. We're going to be really good. I know we we increase funding for some of the local groups, but they were all in line with inflation type increases.
She's asking, was this harder or easier than a typical year, typically about average? I think our our negotiations with the fire departments went smoother than they have in the last couple of years, and we really are grateful to the fire departments for being the best to keep their budget the best. Within the realm of what we can fund and stay within a reasonable tax level increase. And I think that's what we looked at in a situation like this is our tax by the Alice increase out of step with the consumer price index of inflation, you know, you see three point five three like hours and it's right in line, a seat to high. And right in line with the city that they come to conference county, their budget increases. Where within the norm, so to speak, in terms of budget increases, nothing that should align our task papers. And thank you.
Here's a bit of them. Yep.
It's right.
Oh, congratulations.
And you. Top vote getter.
All right.
Well, wait a second. Then I do.
No, it's not to have Bambi on it. Over the rock.
Yeah.
Good night.
So you want to get the whatever you want to.
We have another option in three.
Yeah, you said.
Not three.
I wonder. I know. One year, one year probation. One more year. It's election option.
Not writing again. The LA and that I can mean. Do we have the same?
Yeah.
So it's something that we changed. This is interesting. So it's it's something that but it has to go.
Yeah, so you can change it. I mean. To make it up.
Yeah, to make it a point. Not making rules. Throw bombs out.
Right.
There's now a Republican. It's hot.
Something bad. All right. Or just go down with it.
By your friends.
Yeah.
Spring's not here.
Yeah. So good.
I mean, great.
Yeah. Okay, well. Technically, it's all occurring.
I'm going to put them in Rogers.
Stoneless.
All right.
There's balance.
Of gorgeous.
Our voters' business.
Yeah.
Our residents.
There you go. The wrong.
So are you moving the virgin?
Yeah, I mean, I'll move. We have four, we do a couple of them. So let me do some of the, there's the one over here. Yeah, let's do it. Let's do this. Well, do we have to do the is the assessment role? That won't, that's different for me. Yeah. All right. So the first one is right. And now there's one. We can do. All right. So first thing we'll do is the resolution, the resolution to adopt twenty twenty six assessment special district roles.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Wherever the other one. I'm telling you about that. All right. All right, and then what was the relivy delinquent water sewer amounts?
Okay, I'll segment.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Pretty obvious.
Budget and special district budgets.
Second.
Sorry, the special on this thing.
Yes, I I'd like to move. So maybe because we pay rate schedule same time. Monday. I listen to your loss. And just I just the paper, the manager and police of twenty twenty six.
Oh, so I can. All right, discuss.
I thought this is something we're going to be looking at next year. So you're proposing now that we change favoritism.
The reality is that you have the change of benefits. See you up. In your changes in the pay rate that we have. So just.
And then my understanding is that even with these, we're still going to be under the tax cap.
Yeah.
So so if there's like a year that actually blew this. This is definitely.
But that doesn't translate into just because we can spend back your money without raising the tax rate.
Well, it's not the perky solid thing.
Well, then why are we using that as justification?
Well, it's one.
Say we can save money on healthcare, we can dump it into something else.
Well, the reason for doing it has been we've spent five years discussing how to how to change the, I mean, to actually bring our pay rates closer to our peers. And also come up with a way to have a schedule to address increases. And then on the then on the sixteenth, we agreed to use this chart. We didn't, we were going to be filling in numbers at that point. So I think what personnel committees posing is that we use these as the numbers to fill in even after the discussion we had last time and the reasons. Went through a ton. Which was last time, and it could, we didn't have. We didn't have any. Jordan. One way or the other, can decide on numbers last, so we went with.
We went through every number last time.
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't, we couldn't agree on. We had decided to put numbers in there for preliminary and some of these were their proposed changed.
We did agree.
He did. We had to, we 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 never took a vote on agreeing on the numbers. We just we use placeholders, is what we say.
Well, I guess you could say that about any line, like great. That we passed it. We.
We 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 release.
Your votes on any budget.
No.
So it's kind of late in the game to single out one item budget, one aspect of the budget. So we're going to revise what we spent three hours discussing.
Well, if there is some dream, is is the reason we is the reason an amendment means that we were not, you know, all in agreement. We were with, you know, workers. No.
Again, we didn't vote on a single item on this draft budget in our negotiations, as has been our practice for as long as I've been. We've worked through and had discussions between governors. And then we put it forward to the public. We don't put it forward necessarily to have ourselves discussing it. Well, negotiate at the eleventh hour with one of our members absent. Yeah.
But the member whose absence was here last time too, we just. I don't know what's going on.
But she also thought we had settled this. As did I. And and so this is. Oh, it should be.
And they're offering an amendment, so second, it's sort of discussing, I think.
Well, I haven't even because I I thought we had settled, so. This is.
Well, the message was very clear that you know, there there was a new updated pay rate discussion and we should be prepared to discuss.
Yes, we discussed updating the pay rate schedule twenty twenty seven that we would go for and and use it in the future. We never said I.
We will, we will never will be the idea that this was we be for forty twenty seven.
Well, maybe.
I understand the, I understand the last piece is since we have been for months in twenty. When you go to.
Yes, and then in this meeting, when we discussed work line. And that we were going to go through these line by line and come up with a fair and a separate rationale for each favorite.
Right.
They did, and stated.
We talked about point was like the basically the smell. Both good. Comparable. We go through the same, also we go through the same thing at the same, what we can, can't compare, just try to do best we can. The way this has been at the port, I think the only thing there would which is isn't part of the budget for this year, because we don't need to do it for this year, but I think the only thing we're going to have to add to this process is it's the after doing performance reviews, a way to board folks, submit fives, call exceptional. About this, whether it's a one time payment or, and that's where one thing we got hung up on, because we don't know which way do it yet, but that's not necessarily the exposure.
I'm just glad.
That wasn't in this term, it's worse.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we never try to negotiate.
Yeah, and then they still have.
But which I have which I have been navigating for years, we not do that and that is sensible, not award incremental increases between our staffs, you know. There's a system.
Yeah.
This process did not have previously a visit a rationale for some thirty percent salary increases that would be proposed by the committee.
This is a system.
And justified to my constituents, I think, you know. People on brutal road aren't in the thirty percent increase in their salaries. How the heck are we doing that to ourselves here? Since there's an amount of, you know, responsibility for not exercising here. And I don't even know if we put those in here because this has been sprung on us at the eleventh hour. We did get rid of the thirty percent.
Yeah. Well, yeah, if you, I guess, can you go through? All of them.
What do we do?
Well, we're still, we're gonna be doing more discussion. Can you just explain the one you talked about, you took the thirty percent one, so which one's got it? So I know there was the first one that we talked about early in the process. So what changed from that first one? It's because it's different from the one that um. I guess, the one we never discussed weeks ago.
Yeah, I think with all the ones.
Because I know some of the, some of the numbers changed, but you're.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them backed up the way the original.
This is with consultation with department heads.
Yeah, so we didn't ask you of the areas that have a bigger jobs. To account for that, to account for staff. So there's no meaningful record. Most are in. Half percent range, let's say above and below ten percent. So there. Few about buyers, not that many, there are some that actually are right on our target and they're wanting to retire most.
So it's basically the folks who've been there longer, other ones that work out of place, but the ones who are. They're more recent, they're already within that moment.
Would you mind going through what are the ten percent plus raises? It's not saving me some.
Um. Make sure I have right numbers. If you're wrong.
Not his names, just positions.
Yeah, no, that's the vision.
Or or budget lines.
Yeah, by the lines, there weren't much line that all have. Um, overall, not much budget line, but we will send that to my house. Um. Higher than. Sixteen percent, I'm getting highly different kind of. Um, the town clerk has a higher. That that third line. The.
As higher than what?
Uh, so that one is seventeen percent, and that's again, someone's been there so long that. It's about threatening the third recreation. At twenty percent. The uh. Okay, the in your account card has a sixteen percent increase, again, founder longer than ten years.
Could we pause for a second?
Sure.
I'm looking at. Retro recreation, adopted budgets, you know. Those budget seventy two. So where is the twenty percent?
You, okay, so where are you looking, which line do you look at? So or which? Uh, what are you looking at? Are you looking at budget, the preliminary budget? Okay, I just want to show what I think. So the modified for twenty twenty five is sixty nine thousand one ninety two, a proposed preliminary budget is seventy two thousand nine ninety eight. Number. That's on your account. So the adjustments would be because she, uh, that position. Has been here along, the initial that position venture a long time and the rate, we adjusted the rate.
So you're saying there's a number involved that's not reflected in this question?
The preliminary budget was the one that was discussed at the meeting of October. Twenty seconds, that Wednesday night, the preliminary budget had to have those numbers from that. Meeting. It meant what we're suggesting for the adopted budget is to amend the. Do amend the numbers from preliminary budget to match. The pay schedule that you have. But you don't have them in front of you because I can't put them in any budget line, because that's not, or I can't put them in a budget until it is. Asked. That the one that even even I worked on last. So I know. No, I probably have a thing.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
It's the one where these numbers on the far right are three eight seven four. Sure, I think I'll start saying whatever they're on.
So these tax rate numbers that we just voted to the media are inaccurate. Is that correct?
No.
How can that be? Is the preliminary budget just said is what we were presenting to the public?
Yeah. Primary budget, well, you're not.
Right.
That's over past, so there's there's what they made of two primary numbers. But you have.
You're a lot different.
And you had a tax summary sheet that went along with the budget that you circled.
Yes, because at the time, that's the information I had, so I should not provide anything else besides the information I was given.
I can't just make a, okay, so another budget without. Uh, I mean, just clarify this again. So is the tax rate worksheet reflective of the preliminary budget that circulated? Or is it reflective of these changes?
No, it's reflective of the preliminary budget that was publicized.
Which was my question originally. So the numbers that I just voted to that reporter do not reflect what is actually.
They still.
Just finished, do not reflect what is currently being proposed.
They do not unless you choose to use fund balance, so then you don't change the tax levy at all.
Right.
This is embarrassing.
Well, it's it's embarrassing. They don't stick around a lot, a lot, listen to the whole discussion. It's not our fault. They they chose to leave, so. So what is the um difference in the? Levy amount then?
So.
If the, if this was adopted as it's.
The change would be in the levy amounts.
Just right now, it's preliminary budget shows ten, three, ten million, three seventy five eighty eight.
Yeah. So the, let me just do it so I know I have good numbers, because I did go through and prepare. What the changes could be. Just so we have good numbers. So the change, the only changes would be in the A and the B fund, and the total change would be seventy one thousand dollars. From what the preliminary budget had.
Right, and that's not.
Yes. Yeah. Seven one. So then what does that do with the um attack, I mean, the worksheet? So what is it? How much is that rate is the tax?
If we were to not use tech, not use um. Unbalance. We would need to increase that by seventy thousand. That would change the tax levy. We'll just look at these numbers one more time, just want to make sure I have the right numbers, okay? So the final three stats, who's that? Okay. So when I put those numbers in, it changes the tax rate increase, the tax rate increase would go two point nine percent, and the levy increase would go to four point four three percent.
And that's if we use.
If that's if we use tax helps, you can choose to use, we are currently at the prior. At the prior, uh, like the spreadsheet I sent you originally with the preliminary budget. We were only, we were using um a total of. Eight hundred and twenty five dollar, eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of fund balance, and a hundred and eighty of that was actually for capital projects. And the uh, for the village sidewalk project, the hundred fifty thousand we budgeted for the village sidewalk project, which she said we were used fund balance on. And thirty thousand was because of the top plan that we are not retaxing for, because we budgeted for in the past. So the only new fund balance use. Was six hundred and forty five thousand, and it's primarily from DA and DB because they have a very high healthy fund balance. So even if we were to take that seventy one thousand and use it all out of fund balance out of A and B, it would not be a dramatic amount.
What, what is the tax, the tax rate number that matters? Two point five.
Um, let me, I can be a two point nine percent and a tax rate, a two point nine percent increase in tax rate, is that what you said? So you're asking about the tax rates?
Yeah, just because right, if it's at the original numbers, it's a two percent rate increase.
Mm-hmm.
And it was forced seventy four.
Yeah, so the tax rate becomes four point seven eight. Five eight. Yeah.
So what happened or especially? Twenty seven.
I think that was the day.
And you resolve, you look at more. This uh, this is that I heard Sam. You you have to improve this. Set up grid. Did that occur?
We tried, we actually did it before that twenty second meeting, and I explained that I called at least ten municipalities trying to get information. Either they don't have it, they have unions, so it's a little different, but they, you know, didn't have something similar. Didn't respond. I did reach out to Christina, found similar um. We looked at any town, any town in New York State that was not downstate that had similar expenditure totals to Dryden's. To try to say, okay, that's probably similar in size. So we did try. Um, again, it was within a two-day span when I got this information to go do it. And I tried looking it up through various other sources, salary dot com. I even signed up for some free AI one week. Um. Uh. Trials and should try to find any information for New York State. Government employees and was it to find it was just. I went numerous ways and could not find the information. Um.
And so I I guess the.
And we still have to talk about the executive director for drive five or two.
Yeah, that's also a very large increase, even though different funding, but so large.
That has to be just set tonight, too.
Well, it's part of this, it's part of the schedule. I have included all of the meeting staff on the schedule. So that, number one, it provides the information to the service, it provides the information to our payroll clerk, so she is clear direction. Um, without having to go through multiple and uh resolutions and. Proof of that information. So I tried to put a lot of information on this as one schedule.
So the fact that we had a discussion about that and actually resulted in. You drive fiber, record salary did not have been included in this voting.
It's not included in the budget.
I'm just finished. But had and set it the salary and it's been shown to to me anyway, the first time right now. There was, we had a specific discussion where that salary would not be set in this. Do you not remember?
I remember that, it was not, okay. Okay.
Um, no, she said that we had to have a salary number agreed upon. It just is because it's the enterprise fund, it's doesn't show in the actual budget, but we still have to decide.
Yes. So it is true, it is not decided in the budget, that's correct. I created in the pay schedule, so we're not having to amend the pay schedule three times to add all the staff in that need to be included in this pay schedule. So it's putting it all in one place.
I think that is why sufficiently that.
But I had to have a number, we can't just pick it out.
We not say that last.
I did say I needed enough.
That's why, that's why I sent an email out the other day with the proposed number, Ben, what I based it.
I also need it for driving fibers budget itself, so I I needed it one way or the other. It's not a matter of. I'm trying to hide it, I'm trying to put it all in one spot, so it's easy for. Uh, the board and all of the staff to use, necessary staff to use when needed.
And that's eight thirty in the seventy one thousand.
No, it is not included in the seventy one thousand, because we are only talking about the tax levy for the budget.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think we have room in the fund balance, since we got this one time, so we're not changing the levy. Because it's.
I don't think so.
Yeah, like.
The amount that's left. Over is well over, it's gonna be well over. If you take part out of DNA. Which would be. Roughly forty thirty, so two point six million in a font, talking about so over. Four ten. Almost four hundred and like that. So I.
That'll do that. There's one principle about. All the balances, you do not spend them on operational costs, and I'm the only one who knows that, that's.
No, you're not the only one who knows that, but what we've been, what we're trying to accomplish here, something we've been trying to accomplish and talking. To not only employees of the public who have ruined things for five years, it hasn't happened. So it's it's.
It has.
It hasn't.
No, it's not. Process was laid out, it was researched, explained.
And it doesn't work.
That's it.
Doesn't.
Was this, doesn't work.
Okay, here's the thing, out of the four of us here, I've been the one doing actual reviews, okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Right, so yes, the process has been followed, it hasn't done what we want it to do. That's the problem.
And I will say, you're concerned about using fund balance to pay operational, we've always, well, not we've always. In the past few years, we have used fund balance to pay operational expenses every year to. Uh, ensure that number one, we're keeping a reasonable fund balance, but number two, there's a lot of pieces we're trying to balance. For all the costs in the town, but we've managed to keep our fund balance healthy and safe. To be able to fund numerous capital projects all at the same time. And so we're still, even in this budget, using fund balance for operational costs in VA and DB because they have, are larger than probably healthy. Reasonable. Reasonable, as the state compterers will say, fund balance. So we're using that there to say this would make sense, so we use fund balance to finish off to. Balance DA and DB, A and B would, we're using fund balance in A for capital projects. We're using fifty thousand of fund balance right now and B, just again, it has plenty and. Once the money is in those funds, we can't move it around. So that's the other key we have to remember, we're always trying to balance whose fund balance is reasonable. If it's not, then we need to make sure that's paid by tax, the tax levy, if it is, then it can use some of it. So we've been using fund balance for operational and.
We're not there, right? Today, if we go in this direction, we're basically saying we're using fund balance to make up this position. Funding.
If we had.
It's nearly directly, it's hard to set.
But the same.
It's just when you spread it out early in the process, we can say. But in this case, you know.
But at the same time, majority of this, these increases are offset, as we've said before numerous times. By the change in the health insurance. So we were trying to balance this change with another change, but offsetting another change. To do it all in the same year meant it's not going to affect the tax levy as deeply as it could if we'd done it in separate years. Or asking staff to give up a very. Uh. A health insurance plan that they, many wanted to keep. And by asking them to do that, it's kind of a, what I turn it around and saying, because of their sacrifice, we're also willing to pay them some more. Um. Which I think it, it, it's still a very good health insurance plan. I'm not trying to say it's not, it is a very good health insurance plan. So I think it's just a way to, but again, we're gonna, by setting this pay schedule now, yes, there are jumps this year. But after that, they will be a steady increase at CPI. We will basically just change it every year, update it every year for the CPI before we even get into budget discussions.
Hmm. True, there will be a, a jump this year, but. I think everyone noticed that there's gonna be that built-in jump every year. Going forward, so.
But not.
We're paying, you know, in this case, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand a year, it's gonna be seventy-one thousand more next year and seventy-one thousand more building in.
No, it's not useful, no.
No, okay, go ahead, Dan.
Don't say that, I'm sorry.
No, we do, because the key is, is we do one jump this year is seventy-one thousand. But next year, we were gonna have a situation where we're only gonna be increasing it. Uh, let's pretend CPI is three percent. They are only gonna, all the salaries are only gonna go up three percent.
Spot. That's, I'm not saying it's gonna go seven. Here, it's gonna be built in, so we're setting a long-term additional level of fun.
That's.
So, but this is not a one-year thing, uh, we're thinking.
And it's still justifiable.
Another level.
But it's still justifiable and the thing is, is that the ones that appear to be the highest and people to be honest, would also. Those are the term.
How many people in your suite, you know, that got a twenty percent increase, I mean, got a seventeen, I mean, that.
That's not the issue, the issue is, the issue is.
Justifying this to your, the people who pay our bills.
Because they're, they're.
Have we forgotten how both government and the funnel.
And, and, and.
We're not getting a twenty-eight percent increase in the salaries.
And we also were asked the, asked the people here to do all of the work that we put on them as a board. And for the majority of the board doesn't come here to see what they're, it is increasingly about that, because the thing about, the thing about government is, we are, we, we can be in and out. Every, you know, two to four years. And you wanna have some continuity and the thing is, is the people who we have here now, who are the newer employees are gonna be the. Frankly, the folks who are here, hopefully twenty years from now, who have an institutional memory when we're long gone and when the people after us are long gone. And that's valuable. And we have lost some of the, you know, there was, yeah, it was a handful of people, but we lost some people we wanted to keep and we don't want that happening. So we have what, fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen.
And we lost, so easily, you know, what, fifteen percent of them?
But then at the same time, all of these, in the, in the taxpayers that are paying this are also getting great services, they're getting great home enforcement, they're getting great planning, they're getting, looking at housing. They're looking at making sure marriage licenses are going through, um, easements, there are so many other feature, other. You know, the trails, the whole my, everything that goes along with the planning for this town. All of those things are valuable services that this town, that the town provides. But, but you need.
Okay, but it's not as an actual issue, it's just, no, no. Refusing to take in what's important here. Okay? What is important is that we, now. You know. Living a town, a town for employees, that they wanna stay. They really wanna live. A town for people who wanna come in, we, the times, the opportunities. That's what we will give. Not for that, we need to be, we need, for that, we need.
Targeted, your target.
No, no, no. Structure and structures that is. No. We need to build a structure that at least is competitive with our needs.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the point, to be competitive and that's what this, I think, will accomplish and we're. You know.
In all, in all, if there was some sort of rationale for numbers out there, so. Why is that, or pulled out of heat there and, and, you know, this has been my complaint, it was spring's complaint. And, and now, you know, he pulled this out of the eleventh hour. Um, now it's been where this big shift tonight and, you know, great strategy.
Then, you just say that we were discussing this for over the month already. It's not a bit, you know, again, you know, at, at the last half. We've been discussing this and information that been provided. Yes.
I mean, I'm trying to, we were, we were compromising at the last meetings. We, we were compromising at the last meeting because we had no choice to keep it, we had to have a final budget to, to publish. And so I basically, I know I basically said, I need a number, I can't just. You know, we were looking at eight-thirty at night and we were all still going around in circles and so we compromise, I, I, I don't say we compromised, but we. Ch- changed so that we could have a budget to put out. So you can say, I mean.
I think, um, you know, I'm on point that. I think we just need to move on. There is no more discussion, because we wanna again, continue to go the same segments.
You're not gonna change a single number on this grid, I can tell, and, um.
That's what I.
You had your preliminary discussions, three of you are on board. Um, great stretch, um, would have been great to have a discussion about this, I've been giving hints up, it's just in front of the. Very end of our process.
I don't think the discussion will change. See, because we've been talking about, there's always complaining about where you're, where, uh, which always, let's use this, let's use that. And what happens is we get bogged down in the detail of what exact town or village or whatever we compared to. And the thing is, is like, if you're pulling stuff with like, you, you, you don't have to go that far miles wise to find out who does what. It's just. And to see what's paid, it's all in, it's all in that New York, uh. Was it? Seeing through New York and, and yeah, and look up, and I mean, honestly, that's how I. Right, and I pull, I like, that's where I pulled out the thing for the executive director that you said, based on something that I. Know was comparable. That's exactly what I.
Okay, so.
Because the thing is, is for our, for that job. There is no real public comparable thing, so you have to, you have to do the best you can. I think the public thinks that. Long as we're doing the best we can, they're gonna be happy with that, because if you, if they weren't happy, I mean. You would know it, they trust that we're doing something right and I think here, finally just get this. Knocking this thing around about, um, pay scales and all that, the last couple of years. And, and there's no reason to do it.
So because you're tired of doing the work that we're supposed to do on this.
No, the, the thing is.
Easy rate out and we're gonna use taxpayer money because we're tired of doing our job of reviewing and promoting.
You can talk, you can filibuster something for five years. Just gotta be decision-based, decision. Trying to, the thing is.
Some of us, that, that's not.
Well, you can study, you can, you can, you can study something to death, too. I mean, the, you, we've done, we've talked about it every year, how we could, how, like, how do you even justify? In the past process. Like even, like, when, when we have reviews that always come back, everyone's amazing. And then we still complain when there's ten, like, you, department heads are coming in asking for ten, fifteen percent now, in the old way. We end up still being unhappy, you know, even cut it down in half for obviously no justifiable reason, somebody is. And then now what we're, what this has done is based on that. Based on a start.
Not based on.
It's based on, it's just data you don't like. How, there's difference.
It's very selective data, biased statements.
It was. Neighbor municipality.
There is no need to.
Biased in the use from neighboring municipalities.
When different debt, debt spaces, different stress.
Now, for some job, what even spring talked about last week is how the same job is handled. Now, which is really not even helping. Yeah. But even there, talking about one job gets this, this salary and, and. It may, we can do this every year, do that every year. The thing is, this is basically the chart, the whole, the whole chart is based on what stomach salary. It stops. It's not based on what somebody's been getting after ten years, whatever. But in the salaries, then only scale up for this, this year's budget based on where they would fall in that step.
But the waste or equilated funds then is taking your superposals on existing gig rights. Where people have been rewarded, hired, obtained on gig rates that, you know, were satisfied.
Or they weren't always, but years even before you were here, that there are people who have zero.
Yeah.
And all of you remember those.
Not worth changing, though. But we, we're having some significant salary increases for people who have not requested that at twenty percent, I don't know many employed that has asked you. Wait, you know, we're talking about, um, one of these positions, I did the last time, we gave, uh, eight or ten percent increase, the person that wasn't. Didn't, did not request it, now we're giving that same person another twenty percent increase. I think, I feel like the boss test of who pays our bills.
No.
And they were running around people's money, uh, just because maybe.
Well, I, I, I believe.
Capable of making more misfired decisions.
At the risk of you.
This was my complaint last time, I don't think anything has addressed that. How are you going to. Adjust these, you know, I get the grid, I support grid of pay steps and testing. But there has to be some transition plan for existing employees that don't hit that grid without passive spikes itself. And you have to answer that and.
The reason, and I did answer and said, when you said, could we do this instead, and, and. Phases or can we do certain ones and not others, I said that I highly discourage that because of the, the confusion and. But unclear direction for the current staff. It's like, okay, we'll only do staff we hired in the past two years, we'll put them on this plan, but everybody else is on this plan. And that just is, that's, that's poor messaging to your staff, it's poor communication to your staff of where the direction is. And it just makes a try, uh. Management nightmare of, wait a minute, how much am I repaying them, is this right and when are we gonna change that and when are we hiring somebody and where should they be? And so that's why I, I highly discourage that, because I just, if we did one and have it all set. It's done and we don't have to go back and reinvent it, uh, you know, every year to say, okay, well, then we hired this person that can be here, but. I, I don't, I don't think that's a good plan going forward, which is why I discourage that. And that's what the personnel committee understood and that's why we propose this.
People just have, and I, you know, confusion, you know, and actually asked. By, you know. While we, we, we're on the stage. So, anyway. I think we have, I thought one, I think we have enough of a conversation about this and we, this is being moved, it's being settled, I think we just should. Go for.
Go around the.
Yeah.
See.
Remembering those two years.
Used to use the new chart. Your favorite skill J rates.
Or dot one. Chart, and this is the pay rates.
No, that, that, that's just, that's kind of my worksheet, so that is not the.
Chart.
Yeah, basically, you, we'd need to adopt the chart, the twenty-twenty-six pay.
Twenty-six.
Pay rates in the, the schedule that was provided.
That's what. You got the pay rates in the chart.
That was something I also included. It was like second.
But you see, that was. Older pay, the pay is crucial in the version, you, you have adjusted according to, you know.
And.
That's what I.
That, but then the other thing effectively, uh. Budget. People are here to. Spot. But maybe you get those. So. Whatever.
Now we're starting to. No, this. It's special.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Now we give a program though. So then. Right, so then we gotta discuss. To adopt the budget and special district. Right now, that's all. Our goal. To adopt the budget, special district, so. Still increasing. That'd be, um, it's almost. Use forty thousand dollars, we have the eighth. Balance, thirty.
Yeah, I know you.
That's my question.
I said.
So I.
Hold on, I'll say it.
I do, discuss that.
I think just, uh, that goes against base of, that's then preserve funds on itself.
And just for a record, we find the tax rate, well, you know, it's, it's the. So.
Yeah, hiding. No.
Oh, that's great.
I wouldn't know.
Your budget. Use forty thousand out of there. That's my, you gotta, like, the tax rate.
I, I think we need that. I'm just saying.
Yeah, we were, now we're discussing.
Discussing, so, so basically.
Why would we be, change?
Plus and minus is the boat, but we use the tax, we use the. The profit tax. Optic tax still.
Right now, the levy increases three point five two percent. If you, if you use. At most seventy one thousand, it'd be, the levy increases four point four percent.
It was the mutual between the guys.
It depends on the home, for the average, when I put it in the average, it's a difference of. Ten dollars. On an average, two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. So obviously it could be higher, be lower, but. So on the. Ever last year. And and keep in mind, too, a fire department, one that's going to go down by fifty dollars. Because of the decrease in that tax rate, um, so.
So if we increase the tax rate. It would still be less.
Possibly every home, every taxable is different, so I never wanna say, but. On the average, it could say pretty close to the same or less, but I. You know, every home, every taxable is so different. I, I really get hesitant to make that sharp.
So another people I talked to, they're, they're gonna care if their. Their taxes won't be like, do this happen.
So now we're.
What do you complain? I'm, I'm okay with it, but. I know what happens.
Will you support that then? And become more so, okay. What we do.
I, I, I don't think it's, there's a ball to. Take fund downs and pay for operational.
When the levy increase.
Oh, second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Like extra resolution is authorized. That's two and oh, six thirty five five one year. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Authorized, we have the. Some resolution.
Again, you already said.